Call our Loudoun City Council Workshop for the month of July to order. And this time I want to recognize our city manager, I think he has someone who wants to introduce first.
Yes, Loudoun County Commissioner Kelly Rooster is here. We'd like to recognize her. She's coming forward to speak on progress being made regarding the Loudoun County Courthouse.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you so much. And I appreciate you putting the man first here because I do have to scoot out to another meeting too. But I am here on behalf of the mayor who is out of town and county commission. We are very excited and would like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity at the property and for doing the courthouse on the riverfront. And I have come to tell you that we are ready to move forward. We are asking you that if you are in agreement with that, we are ready to move forward. We have secured our debt and it looks like that we are waiting patiently to break ground and want to do a little core sample testing on the property too. So, does anyone have any questions? I'm remembering a sketch. These are just preliminary sketches of something that we are looking at. So, and I think some of you have seen the sketch.
Kelly, have you all definitely decided that you're going to have a two-story building as your next facility or a three-story building or a one-story?
Uh, right now? Right now, with the figures that we got back from MBI, we are looking at a two-story building. Now, MBI has also said that they're going to work with this son and look at a possibility of a third story, but right now that is not something that we have said that we will officially do. We secured enough money to do two stories solidly, so we are looking at two stories.
Do you know what all the partners were hustling big moves?
We had a short little meeting the other day with a few of our elected officials and we discussed some of the court, the court offices that we are going to need. And we talked about the court rooms and we talked about different sections and who would be moving and who we needed to look at moving. So, we are still trying to get a basis down on that. I think your mayor was there too.
Yes.
So, nothing's finalized, I mean, as far as things?
No, no. We've not finalized any of that yet. No. We want to, of course, get our core sampling done so that we can proceed from there and then decide.
I guess all we need to do is put on the agenda for a meeting and vote on it to let proceed or some kind of inner local agreement.
Yes, Councilman Rooster. My conversations with Mayor Bradshaw always centered on the exterior of the building and in particular the parking lot. If this building were to be located as rendered, it would take up most, if not all, of the police department's parking. And so, our discussions have centered around securing adequate parking, adequate shared parking for the police department at this new facility.
And yes, we discussed that at our meeting as well. And that was also in our discussions about helping and paving the section between.
So, it would just be our desire going forward and Attorney Brown, we could have this reflected, you know, in the ultimate agreement that we enter into, a place at the design table, you know, for the building's ultimate location and the landscaping and parking that's around it because that needs to complement and interact with the city facilities that are already there. In terms of price, I see Citizen Mr. Schultz, is he here? He's commented at previous meetings about what price should be paid for the property. My personal feeling, and it is a personal feeling, is that tax monies all come out of the same pocket. And we want to be partners on this and work to facilitate the best deal possible for all taxpayers. I will look for feedback from you all as to whether or not you would entertain a straight-up transaction of, you know, property in exchange for the building or if your mind is in a different place and you would like to see that go a different route. I think that would be a great outcome of this workshop so that Chris, I, and then staff could put together a particular sort of agreement that would be bring forward to your regular meetings we voted on.
That discussion could also include, I guess, some sort of long-term lease would be another option.
Yes, sir.
Well, we got another option, just quit claiming or just do a hundred-year lease or whatever. I don't know what benefit it would be of doing a lease because our names will be stuck on it. If our name's stuck on it ultimately, we're going to be liable or out in favor of deepening it over to the county and then build it to our space that we have a lot of it with. It would be very shaking it up.
We can't hear you. We can't hear.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
What I'm saying is, I'm in favor of just quit claiming it to the county and letting them be responsible for it. If we did a hundred-year lease or fifty-year lease, our name's still going to be on the property and if something major happened, we'd be liable for it. I mean, I don't see, I don't see the point of selling the property to the county because we're going to take the city tax dollars and pay county, which we pay county anyway. It wouldn't make no sense, in my opinion, to try to rob Peter or pay Paul.
But to your point, Manager Ross, tax law comes down the same pocket, is what you're saying. Do you need to place any input?
As of date, there's no contract number agreements or anything like that that's even a second?
Just been?
Just some verbal discussion.
Yeah, verbal discussions.
It's been, it's been open and loose discussions on the topic. I think what we were waiting on is a signal from the county commission that this is indeed their desire. I think we've received that tonight.
Yes, and so much desire.
As Commissioner Rooster says, they're ready to get going on that coming from the meeting, I tend to their.
We are ready to move forward.
They know it's going to be a long process.
It will be.
So, let's just start it. It's Mayor Bradshaw.
So, next Monday, what would our discussion or vote be on? Do we have a contract on the table or an agreement to look at or are we just saying, yes, we're in favor of them taking a next step to look at the building?
Attorney Brown, what would you recommend?
I think it's unlikely we would have an agreement that we could actually vote on. We could have basically a letter of understanding with some broad terms in place, whether or not this is going to be a cash transaction or non-cash transaction. And I think that we could, Manager Ross could give the county approval, go ahead with the core sample without having that in place. I think that it would be very beneficial to the county and the city to know sort of that broad framework before we get too far down this path.
Would I help you, Commissioner Rooster?
Yes, we do have a meeting next week, so we'd like to, at least, I'd like to go back and.
Report something.
And report something to them because we are very anxious to.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I'm asking of all, where we could need to discuss tonight because we're not, we're not trying to break me or comment like that.
It's like we need to put together a letter of understanding.
Right.
To be able to vote on something like that.
I think a letter of understanding would.
First step.
Yes, would be.
And that could give an authoritative edition of core samples. We're going to get that out of the way and we could get those agreements in place. Councilman Jensen, do you have any input on that? Check. It will now. So, is that something, you and Ty can put something together for that or, so we can look at Monday?
Have some further discussion on that broad outline.
Okay.
And all have any more questions?
More questions for Commissioner Rooster?
Questions, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're not too quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' input that you'd like to check?
Not, not citizen.
Not yet.
Not even citizen.
I'm Teresa Webb and I just want to share some information and have a question from the merchants. On August 24th, in conjunction with River Fest, we want to have a sidewalk chalk art event and we'd like to do it on the sidewalk around the courthouse. I have spoken with Mayor Bradshaw and he doesn't have any problem with that. I've talked to Mark Carroll. He says that's great. It won't interfere with River Fest. But one thing that we would like to do is have the sidewalk pressure washed. It's my understanding, and I could be wrong, the courthouse and the ground belongs to the county, but the sidewalk is city property. So, I don't know if that's something the city could have the sidewalk pressure washed or not. This is going to be a free event. We're going to furnish the chalk for whoever wants to paint. We hope it'll be, if your three-year-old grandchild wants to paint a stick man in the sunshine, they'll have fun doing that. Or if it's a professional artist that wants to come and paint, that they'll be free to do that. There won't be any cleanup because the rain will take care of that once the event takes place. We're not going to block the sidewalks that went up to the courthouse so people can actually paint from the inside and then people that want to look at the art can walk around the grass on it. Questions?
Any discussion? We don't have a put-down material cause.
I don't have an estimate. I wasn't sure if that's something the city would be responsible for, if we would need to take care of that. So, if y'all can let us know if the merchants need to do that or what we need to do.
Ellis, have we ever took care of the sidewalks around the courthouse?
Not that I know of, but that doesn't mean we won't. I make decisions to get water and I have to investigate if I have to refill water.
Ms. Webb, what's the timing of this event? What's the timeline?
Um, it's August the 24th and it'll be just that one afternoon they'll start. I believe we're going to have them say they can start at two o'clock and they can paint till dark if they want to.
So, you're going to sign a certain section?
Yes. They'll give them a signed section and we'll furnish them the chalk and they can paint. There'll be someone there supervising so that your art will be legal, moral, ethical. And we won't have anything entrusted to the view of the public.
Ellis, since there's a water issue, why don't you get some estimate from self-contained pressure washer guys that's somewhere around there. There's nowhere we could borrow water if you have a problem. I think the water shut off to the border. That should do it.
And you'd have to have a tank or some kind of.
Yeah.
A drier than a pool.
They'll have to be cleaned up too because I don't think that rain's going to hit that to clean it up. It could just leak half of it if it didn't rain.
So, you think we need pressure washing in after the event?
Do it before and after.
Yeah. And if it's something the merchants need to do or help with, we're not opposed to that. We just like to know which direction to go.
Maybe sometimes it can rain, but not much. We've got duckie looking. I mean, our luck is more than the four down there and right more than.
In any event of rain, obviously, we won't have the sidewalk chalk and we'll probably donate the chalk that we purchased to the schools or something.
And we'll have plain sidewalk.
And we'll have plain sidewalks. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Teresa. Anyone else have some?
My name is Penn Hunter and I've attended the county commission meetings with regards to the new facility, the, I'm going to call it the courthouse annex two. And I've heard about the three pennies being allocated from the county budget for a seven billion, two-story building. But I also heard today a third story and possible, I know there's only a discussion about this, but about building it to the city specs. Is it going to be contingent on any of those factors with regards to the release of the land or the, or the giving of the land to the county?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, there's going to be, will there be more discussion beyond, because this is the first I'm hearing of it in a form, in a public meeting. I haven't heard county commission discuss that. So, will that be something that you will be taking to county commission for their discussion as well?
Are you talking about the exterior, the looks of the exterior?
Well, I'm talking about a third floor, so that would, the only discussion that I've heard was two floors from the county. And I'm asking is.
I think what the county was talking about, since they're the only acquired seven point two million.
Right.
Is go ahead and add that third floor unfinished because it's cheaper now to put up four walls while they're building. That would be for future growth.
Okay. And I would have a concern about that because when I asked if the building was going to build in such a way to add a third floor, I was told that it wasn't. For example, the annex that we have now, originally it was supposed to have a third floor. It was future growth. And later, much later, we would learn that it wasn't built to add a third floor. So.
My push is go ahead and put the third floor up because it's cheaper to do it now.
The quotes I saw, buddy, had twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand square feet, the three quotes.
Right.
You know, many did have one that had all the bells and whistles and the third floor, which was way out of their budget.
Okay.
It was not a point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I knew that was seven point two and it was very close when they allocated the three pennies.
And then Mayor Bradshaw said, oh, it's trying to get the twenty-two thousand square feet.
Okay. So, before you sign the agreement, there will be, I guess, further discussion about this with county commission as well then?
Sure there will.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Please just state your name.
My name is Pandora Rayland. I'm resident of Loudoun County. A question about the fair market value of the property involved. We don't know.
I don't know, I do not know what it is.
Did one of you mention that you were considering having part ownership of the structure or?
I think it was.
Input on how the structure looked.
Yeah, seated at the sign table.
Kevin, was you're more interested in, you would be, the thought was maybe proclaiming the property to the county and then making sure the county builds something that's satisfied looks-wise and size-wise?
And as Manager Ross said, we're losing some parking.
So, they didn't accommodate that as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay, thank y'all for coming. Move to the next item on the agenda, Gateway Signs Project. T-Dot.
Thank you. This is a, I guess, some time coming here. I know we started this process probably two years ago looking at a sign, a welcome sign as you will, at the intersection of Highway seventy-two and eleven. We first had to get a permit to enter the property to do this project. And so, it's taken us some time through T-Dot processes in order to do that. And I'm happy to come to tonight and report that that has been approved to move forward with the project. At this time, we are ready to move to, go to design as far as what you would like for this, this project to look like when it's a finished product. Because this is the first thing that folks see when they come down seventy-two and enter into eleven onto downtown. But we're also looking for the slide. This is kind of the location that we were talking about. As you know, that's a burn, like a greasy old burn right there. We're looking at installing a sign at that location. That way you have visibility from the approaches of seventy-two and also eleven from the next slide. So, you'll notice the sign actually says Loudoun City. And we utilize their sign that they currently have under review at T-Dot to be approved to get a similar sign that says Loudoun to be installed at this location. We knew that this sign had actually been, already been approved and so we felt like if we went this route with T-Dot, they would approve a similar sign for us here in Loudoun. And so, this is what you have in front of you. It doesn't have to be this brick sign as far as the material wise goes. It's more of a dimensional type aspect that T-Dot's interested in. Being set back off the road, making sure that it doesn't enter into any visibility issues, sight distance issues, making sure that it's up off the road for FHWA requirements. So, that's the reason that we submitted this sign. And you know that recently the county installed a sign with T-Dot also at Dixie Lee Junction. That's a stat stolen sign that was put in as part of the Dixie Lee Junction project. Turned out really nice. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go up there, take a look if you're going through this design process and maybe something you want to emulate down here as well. Another, another approach would be using a similar sign you already have in order to match your existing sign. So, this would just be another, very again, attractive way to match up the signs you currently have in your downtown.
You got the same sign with two different entrances.
Right. I wanted to sort of bookend the town.
Yeah.
You know, our entrance at Highway eleven at the bridge is just dramatic and beautiful. We're at seventy-two and eleven, not so much.
And that would be relocating the sign that's there now, that mesh lines.
That would totally be up to this council, I'd imagine, but that's totally if you guys would relocate that in line.
Thank you for putting on the other side.
There's, there's four corners to that intersection, all the grass and we can, we simply, we could, I call it the civic club sign.
Yes.
Relocate the civic club sign. And I remember civic clubs, those signs have value, they're very important. It would just be to relocate it in a place to facilitate the new gateway sign.
We had to get approval for that relocated?
We do, we would update them as, as to the project.
Right.
And make sure it's approved as well.
This approval didn't give us the approval to move that sign to Memorial.
No, it did not give us the approval to remove that sign. I'm not sure that sign got approval the first time it was installed. I can't answer that I wasn't here then.
This is not, not a grant all funded by the city?
That's correct. This, this has no grant funding associated with it. It would be a project, a city project funded by the city.
Do you know how much the Loudoun City one costs?
I do not. I can tell you that the ones at Sugarland and the ones, the industrial part at Layer Van were, I want to say roughly sixteen thousand dollars a piece, if I recall correctly. And others are done with tile, masonry and tile.
To the best of my knowledge, the Loudoun City sign has not been constructed as of yet. We just knew that that was, that was a design that T-Dot had approved.
I just wondered if they got estimate, cost estimate on it.
I think, I think a lot of that's going to depend on what type of material you go with too and, you know, what you want it to look like at the end of the day because obviously you can go with some cheaper material and end up with a cheaper sign. But, you know, getting the first step was getting T-Dot to approve the location and that's really the hurdle that we're over now.
One idea I would submit for your consideration is to utilize the Tommy Stokes design, which is the, it's the black background with the gold and white lettering. And this could be placed upon a black granite surface and the black granite surface would be, would be centered on a, on a brick wall.
That would tie in to the signage that we already have around the Regenton signage.
Correct.
I think that's pretty, the only bad thing would be later on down the road, they decided to change our frame even for our logo.
Yeah, that's, that's why. It's a very important discussion because it's something you have to look at for many years. If you, if you were to choose to go forward with the project.
First, I think it's, like I said, we've been talking about it for, about ever since I got your apartment, not too long after. So, it's been, been going on for a few years. First hurdle was getting approved by T-Dot, which we got that. So, thanks, Jack, for your help on that. Any other discussion about it? Y'all think it's something we need to look forward with?
Anytime we get something approved from the state, hard to, hard to not do anything with it.
That is a major intersection, I think.
I think we need to move forward with it, just not exactly on board with which sign.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be a whole discussion on that.
And cost-wise, Jack, would you be with us through that whole process?
I can be, yes. Be glad to get you some process and some concepts drafted up for your review.
Okay.
I don't want to sound negative, but, but I'm going to. I can see putting a sign there, but what are we going to do to get the people from out of, you know, from seventy-two down here to see the sign?
That's a great question and a great segue through our next topic.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, it's getting ready to come on down.
Before you plan on putting a sign, I thought we were going to put it out the interchange of seventy-two, seventy-five.
That's what I would, I would, that's the gateway to Loudoun, you know?
If you get in here, you're already in Loudoun.
Yeah, this, this.
And I don't think we should put it down, down in this part of, no.
Not right now, anybody.
I mean, anybody's getting all of that interchange, don't know Loudoun, that's the first thing they're going to see, is that sign.
I thought that one sign.
It did.
Showed the interstate, right?
No, it's not an interstate. It's actually at the intersection of seventy-two and eleven.
I thought, I thought it was that, you know, one of the, the, the greasy areas on the, on the northbound, you know, for your right. That's where I thought it was.
No, that's, that's the, yeah, what you're talking about, put it in the median, that's, that's the federal highway department. They're probably knocking a lot to put a sign in that, in that median.
Would it have to be on seventy-two?
Yeah, it would have to be on seventy-two. You would probably have to acquire some property. Or, or they may, you know, on seventy-two, I don't know how much roadway there is there for land. But we'd have to start a process over as far as getting a permit to go at that location.
And right now, we've got a lawsuit for that location.
Nice word, developer.
Yes, that's, that's, as Manager Ross says, as far as bookending, you know, the main gateway to Loudoun.
I'm going to stick with mine until we figure out a way to get them there, there's no use of wasting the money on it.
So, we can, we can take that in the next topic. Any?
Do we, how long will this permit last? Is there a time?
I don't know that there's really a timeframe. It's one of those things though, as people at T-Dot move on, you know, it's just, they're not, they're not going to remember the project. We just need to make sure we keep the pressure in mind.
Yeah, this, that's a great question. This, the fountain and Loudoun sign at Highway eleven near the bridge is under a lawsuits agreement and those run about every ten years and automatically renewed as long as we're willing to continue maintaining property.
I guess it just depends on how fast we want to move with it.
Well, Jack, you were discussing the interchange of seventy-two eleven.
Yes.
For the last left side.
That's the location, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's also a state right away, brother.
But I know where the roadway is there. I don't know where the roadway is.
Because I know where they're going to be putting that sign there. And I said, they said, well, no, you can't. So, I go and made with them, I said, well, explain one thing to me and then I'll agree with you. Because if you go into Sweetwater and you see one like that, you go into Tellico, you see one like that. He said, well, you're right, Mr. James. He said, here's what it is. It's sort of like, don't put it away, don't put it in the view, outside, out of mind. We don't mind if we don't see it, so go ahead and put it in. I don't know what that meant, but they gave you permission to do it. So, that's why I couldn't understand. What's the difference now, roadway down there or roadway I don't sell?
If it's a roadway and it's thirty foot off the white line for the clearance required by FHWA, then that may give you that permit. I can't, I don't know where the permit, where the roadway is out there on that. That's the reason I can't answer that.
Well, I talked to them about that property out there because there was a, three, four years ago when I first got elected. I wanted to make a parking lot for trucks out there and that property, it's up with the two gentleman out of Prehingle, Tennessee. And the city didn't like the idea because of all the growth around it and they couldn't, it wasn't visible from the eye where they couldn't make, I didn't see it in line of sight. And I went to the state and they said, I told them what the situation was, what I was looking at, I'd like to take that out. And believe it or not, they said, well, if you'll just take it out and maintain it, we don't have to have a fence there. If you'll just take it out and get it out of the way, you're good to go there. So, I found that a lot of things they say no to, but actually if you talk to the right people, you'll be in agreement. So, I'm not saying we should talk to them, I'm just saying that those are instances that I know that normally if you, if you go there and cut a roadway fence, they'll say, you cut that fence out of the way, you cut that fence, la, 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 you know? So, I, I, that's the reason I'm struggling to say because I, I don't know, has anybody asked if could we put a sign?
I did not ask if we could put a sign in seventy-five. I was instructed to ask about seventy-two and eleven, so I can't answer that.
So, we have an answer. So we have an ask, we have.
I, I personally have not asked, no, because I was instructed to put the sign.
My preference would be, would be to put it there and at the least they could say, well, no, it's not possible.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we can, we can certainly ask, there's no hurdle, like you said, I think you bring a valid point, there's no hurdle in asking.
Okay, any other comments?
So I, I need to bring a couple of examples with my marching leaders for a couple of signs and go ask about moving out of this location. Which you see, can you kind of point, I mean, we've talked about things specifically on where you're looking at out there. But I'd be glad to hear us have what you got.
Well, it might be, well, but first I'd ask that question, you might not want to be one of us, someone we know in, in the interstate county to get an ask for it.
Okay. All right, so Jack, you'll come back with some concepts or something? That work? And discuss some more, where located. Okay, we'll move right into the next item, which is traffic signal discussion, State Route seventy-two, nine seventy-five ramps.
Yeah, just to, um, to lead Jack in, I, I think, uh, council comments are true. That even larger and more impactful improvement opportunity is the, uh, is the largest gateway in our community, uh, which is the, or the exit ramps at exit number seventy-two. Think of these as four gateways with, actually. And, um, the following improvements, uh, I think are needed and, uh, and could be pursued by this council. It's just time, money and effort. The first is improved signalization at each ramp. These are red light, yellow light, green lights. Uh, this would improve, um, car traffic, truck traffic, tractor trailer traffic, uh, you name it. Better lighting, uh, there's two instances of high mass lighting that are located at exit. This could be doubled to four. Uh, you see this at, at other intersections, uh, or interstate exits in our region. And, um, a third opportunity, um, which, all, all this would take permitting and cooperation with T-Dot, the thinning of vegetation, um, along the exit ramps to increase visibility of our community.
So when I got here in sixteen, I was asked to do a signal study to see if the ramps met the warrants for a traffic signal. I asked T-Dot to do that at that time. Since that time, the warrants came back that it didn't meet warrants one into, only met warrants one. T-Dot has informed me as of last month that they, uh, they didn't plan on installing a traffic signal at that time because of what was going on. They inform me now that they have come up with some safety monies and there may be some opportunity for us to partner with them. They would be willing to pay up to $200,000 for a traffic signal at this interchange. Probably will be the northbound ramp. They have sent me as of four thirty this afternoon, five examples. And I apologize, I didn't have time to, to get this in front of you. Five, five options for us to improve the turning maneuvers at this interchange would be the first one is striping changes only. That would include dedicated right lanes for each ramp. Option two is striping and geometric, geometric improvements, include striping from option one and widen the northbound ramp to include the right lane turn. Option three is install a traffic signal. Option four is install a traffic signal with geometric improvements, widen northbound off-ramps, include a right turn lane. And option five would be install turn signal with striping and geometric improvements. So there's five options on the table, they're asking us to partner with them. Like I said, right now, they have, uh, they have about a million dollars spread across region one. That's 24 counties, and so that's a big region. And so our project has roads to the top. And so now they wanted me to come to this commission and ask if there's something that you want to participate with. According to these five options, depending on the one you go with, of course, will also determine what the cost associated with that is.
And it's only northbound?
I think the warrants only meet northbound. For the signal, so you wouldn't be getting signal from each end and you'd probably just end up with a one. Thank you. I'm sorry, what?
Should that be a start?
Yeah, I mean, I get a lot of complaints about it, I don't know if the rest of you do.
Yeah.
But it's definitely concerning if they have money to help with the cost, so thank you for pursuing it myself. What would it require from us, just tell them that?
A commitment that you're willing to fund it, I mean, we also can pick an option, one of the five, and then figure out the exact cost. And then we can figure out how much the city would be required to match as part of that dollar. Because like I said, they're going to pay the first $200,000. Anything beyond that would be up to the city to make.
And that would be based on what option you choose?
That's correct.
So that's something we want on the agenda next week, think, is it something any more special on?
I mean, I, I would like to, to return to you, you know, if, if we receive positive impact, positive feedback tonight, I'd like to return you with some more specific options. Because we're, we're talking about real money here. And, um, but we've talked about improvement in this area for a long period of time. It's, it's only going, going to come sooner rather than later if we pay it forward.
And this is money that's not currently budgeted?
No.
Okay.
So move forward with it.
Does anybody else feel good about it?
I'm here, I said.
I think we definitely need to discuss it because it's, it's something that's, that's needed and it's going to be getting it even more and it's coming.
It's like you said, we don't give up anything.
It's, it's coming, very.
So the, the other thing that, um, the lighting, I'd like to talk briefly about that. And then, you know, also, any updates that I can provide to you? You've asked for me to come to about updates periodically, and you've also asked for that. So anything else you've got questions about, I'd be delighted if you could come on over here. The lighting project, um, basically what we will be doing there is the, T-Dot will get a letter, uh, come from the mayor to the commissioner. Basically said, we're interested in an interchange lighting program. What will happen is they'll come out and do an analysis of the existing lighting and also they'll look at the crash data and see what kind of, if there's any kind of, uh, animal hazards or anything like that that's taking place out there. They'll come up with a cost estimate, what it will cost to install those lights. And also to thin out that vegetation so that lighting can be meaningful. Uh, you are on, not, you are not on the hook for any kind of cost associated with that request. The T-Dot is simply an estimate that they will provide you. The interchange lighting program is a 50/50 match if you decide to go that route. There is, there may be some possible, uh, TPO funding that we can look into, which will get an 20 match or about 50. We may be go after an application for that and see if we can get, get awarded. But the first step is really send this letter to T-Dot Commissioner, asking him to do an analysis of that interchange so we can look and see what that cost associated with lighting and the thinning of that vegetation.
I think it's good stuff, we should pursue that, I think. Anybody's in agreement?
I think you have the letter, or I have it.
I don't have it yet, but you said you did draft it.
I think it's on somebody, yeah, somewhere. We got it.
Okay, would that sign? Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Any other updates, anything you might?
Any questions for Jack, or, I was here.
Thank you, thank you for your support. This isn't, this isn't total or trouble, this is the type of work we tap dance to get out of.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks for your time, Jack, great job. Next item, Sarah, Loudoun County Solid Waste Disposal Commission, is someone here to address that or is it?
I know, I thought there was going to be somebody who would address this, so I was not prepared. I was really expecting somebody else, I'm gonna read the screen. So we have been talks with Sand Tech. I'm on the Loudoun and Solid Waste Commission board in case anybody doesn't know, but I'm the one talking about this. We've been in talks with Sand Tech, had a contract almost negotiated and they turned around and, and said, never mind, we don't want that one. We're going to do this route instead. So, um, that was just a couple of months ago, so this new contract is still in negotiations, it's not completed yet. But we did want to bring it forward to let you all know where we're at with this so that if y'all had any concerns with it, you could bring them to us. So all, this is all went out to the stakeholders, um, both cities and the county. So, um, this has went out to everyone, um, if they kind of, if not, it'll be this week. So there's a few good things with this. The, the best thing, um, on this one is that they, Sand Tech, is willing to secure a bond to cover all closing costs. Before, uh, Solid Waste Commission was going to be responsible for the, for the closing, all except for 11 acres that they were going to close. So that was going to be very costly. Um, we've kind of got the same situation with our other landfill that's closed now and it just continues, the cost just continues to roll over and roll over and roll over. And actually put that account in the negative for a while until we had to apply for a grant to fund that back. So, um, that was the biggest thing. The time extension is going to be through December 31 of 2038. That is a worst case scenario. So, um, their hopes is to have it filled before then, but that's a worst case scenario. But if they're not filled by 2038, it doesn't matter, it shuts down by the end of it. Unless the current council decides to extend it from that point. The addition of 27 new acres, the reason we did the 27 new acres was to lower the maximum elevation down to 1,093. That was much higher than the other one. Uh, that keeps the, the site level that you'll see quite a bit lower. That's very much a benefit, um, for Tennessee national citizens because they are the ones that are directly viewing that. So keeping that lower so that does not affect their range of view as much as it was going to. So they are raising the host fee, that is what's paid to the, um, Solid Waste Commission. They're raising it just a little bit, so just 1.5%. But that host fee will go into it as savings and counters, make account towards what we have now. And that will continue to accrue interest and that will help us with the extra costs at the end of that closing time.
Do they have estimate what that should be, I mean, I'm sure it's going to be how many tons they take?
They do. Um, I won't play my podcast. They do have, um, it's going to be around 6 million.
That's good.
That should be in that account.
To help with.
By 2038. There should be 6 million. I will tell you, I, I'm not, not sure, we have a menu on that, and if I, I should have been more prepared and brought all my stuff anyways, but that's, I'll leave it here on the air. But, um, the account at current time is in much better condition than it has been in the past.
Because that's been an issue.
It's been, it's been a very, very big issue. So, um, we are very pleased with where the account is right now. And with this, the whole point in doing a new contract was the current contract was going to have us in the negative and us closing all the acres to it, which would be a continual cost. If you're looking at years and years down the road, we would still be paying on that closing. So this contract gets rid of all the closing. Every five years, they have to close so many more acres. So it, it sets guidelines and dates that things have to be done. The other con, the current contract does not do that. So it's, while it's not perfect, I mean, if you don't want the landfill, you don't want the landfill. But we can't just stop and say, go away. Because we wouldn't have the money to take care of it if we did that. So this is a very good option moving forward, in my opinion, from the contract that I've read, the contract that we were approached with before. And there's.
Is there a timeframe on the wheel wash this?
Yes, by the end of 2020. So the, the wheel wash is definitely a big plus. Uh, there's a lot of complaints about the road being dirty, mud, constant, it rocks. It's a very big issue down there. So the wheel wash was a big push on our side. They have done some investigating into what type of wheel wash. There actually has to be some type of inspection done to tell us exactly what we would need. And they have not done that until we can more pinpoint that we are together on this contract, so they're waiting on that. But they are looking into wheel washes and trying to figure out where they need to go from there. They do have wheel washes at other sites.
So if you have some experience with this?
They do. They don't have them a, a lot, but there are a few. I think the closest one, um, if I'm not mistaken, similar to our situation, is in O'How. But I do believe that some of the council, um, if this continues, some of the commission if this continues, are going to go up there and take a look at that wheel wash, see it in action.
Any questions for Councilman Bivens on the solid waste contract? How many years to dis-extend it from the current? That was a big thing, they want a lot, a lot longer.
They wanted a lot longer. This one extends it an extra seven, eight years from what it was.
That may be bad, you know.
It was approved in 20, uh, 2007 and it was a 20-year contract, so it's 2027. 2038, that's what, 11 years.
Yeah, okay.
It's had more than 11 years.
They were asking for a lot more than that.
If they did that wheel wash, that, that's a big issue out there.
And like you said, 2038 is the worst case scenario.
2038 is a worst case scenario. And it does say that in the wording of the contract, that that is a worst case scenario. Um, according to what, what we're taking in right now as far as tonnage, that landfill should be full by around 2030, 2031. So we're looking at quite a bit, you know, extra time there, but things could happen, I'm just going to go down.
Over, up?
Yeah, over, up.
Thank you for that report. Next item, paving update.
Yes, um, as you got us around town, there's a tremendous amount of progress being made on our paving list. We do have a, a small update on the cost of this project and Ellis is here. Uh, and he's put forward a, a summary of those additional costs and Ellis is going to explain it to you now.
All right. Just want to go over kind of what's going on right now, obviously, car to machine has been paved. You'll notice there is striping. Uh, that is a temporary striping at this point. They will come back and install thermoplastic after the fact, so that it may not look as neat as you'd expect, it's just temporary striping at this point. Uh, the plan right now is to pay commerce tomorrow. Odds are it'll take one day. From there, they'll go to Carter Street and then Ward Avenue last. Uh, Ward, there's still some, and we're talking about that, there's some issues on Ward that we need to address. I'll talk about it here separately. Uh, one of the things Ty just mentioned was the addition in price. Originally, when they quoted, was $523.75 per liter of tire. And each one of the pavement contractors had that as a stipulation of the price of, and if price went up, then there'd be an adjustment. Uh, there was an adjustment, uh, it actually went up to $546.67. That total came out to $3,355.48 added for asphalt. So not a huge decrease, you know, because I bring the total from originally $476,399 to $479,754. That will be an adjustment, you know, if the council approves. But just want to bring that to your attention. Uh, on to the other issue of Ward Avenue, the other documents you'll see in front of you. We were milling, in the process of milling Ward Avenue, uh, we were trying to expose the curb gutter. That was one of the things we want to do is get back and resolve some of our drainage issues. Uh, in the process, we understood why they were paving over that curb gutter. The, the original asphalt is only probably less than two inches thick. So when we were milling, we actually got down to the base rock. So what they did is they actually paved up and over the curb gutter to try to get more asphalt in place. Well, in the process of milling, we noticed a couple of very, very soft spots. You know, fortunately, we had not uncovered them until now because the garbage truck doesn't hit those areas because typically there's parked cars along Ward Avenue. So we've been fortunate that we haven't actually damaged the street enough. But in the process of milling, we've actually exposed some areas that are very soft because of this. So what you'll see is, item 3A is soft cut around the damage areas, dig out 180 square yards to approximately exactly 13 inches. Uh, install some basically fine dirt and asphalt on top of it. For the base repair was $21,157, additional to Ward Avenue. And the second part of that is actually coming back and installing additional asphalt. Uh, we'll have to go back and over the curb gutter unfortunately in some locations. But the original plan was to pave an inch and a quarter. This will actually bring it to two and a half inches to get us a little stronger mix of asphalt. Typically, the garbage truck doesn't go in those areas, but we're going to repair it in case that it does, there'd be, you can hold out.
And that's kind of big, so.
Now's the time to fix it. Unfortunately, we're kind of, they're waiting on us for an answer. So we're kind of in a holding pattern until we give them an answer on the repair options. We spent a lot of time within the day talking to different areas and scenarios. This was the best. We spent a lot of time within the day talking to different areas and scenarios. This was the best option to repair, given the price and time constraints.
You can't do that with hope works. You can't fix it.
I don't have the people or resources to do that right now.
Yes, it's what you uncover when you get into something like that, you know?
Correct. Like I said, we didn't know, because the garbage truck is not going anywhere, so it hasn't seemed to wait.
And it's still not going to see the weight wasn't made over here or not.
True.
There was no physical indication that this was going on until they did.
That's correct.
It was perfectly smooth.
Like I said, my concern is that there's no cars parked there. The garbage truck will go over there. The only reason the garbage truck hasn't gone over there is typically cars parked there. Our garbage truck guys have to walk over there, pick up the cans, and bring them over. If there's no cars parked there, the garbage truck will go over that curb. I just want to repair it so that in that, in the case I have, it will be made clear. Like, they just need an answer, so they proceed, and look at how the work's happening, holding pattern at this point.
So this is your recommendation?
Absolutely.
Andrew Ross, do you have a recommendation?
I think Ellis, some of our honesty. In a good manner. I mean, it's such that we'd have to adjust our processes and treat one, treat one differently than others. With this apparent danger, you know, I'm under any defense service.
But this means you don't have to worry about it. I mean, you know if the garbage truck goes over, it's going to be.
That's correct.
Well, Ellis, if we didn't let them fix it to where they suggested they do it, would that not affect the warranty in the long run?
Absolutely.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, you'll lose your money or more.
Well, it would be too hard to not to.
That's correct.
Have the same garbage truck.
Would that sink over Ward Avenue fast?
What still bothers me is why can't you fix it? You've got the equipment, you've got, you're on the street department.
There again, it calls back on warranty. If Ellis fixed it and it had any kind of a problem with it, they would say, "Well, it's something that y'all done, it's not something that we done." If they do it, and they do the job, and we, and they have a problem, it's their problem, period. You don't, you don't, you don't, you've got two or three ships in the same bag. Because in too much form of favor point can be done. And I've written that before. It's just not a good idea.
They're really responsible.
Right. If the responsible party can beat your boss. If we were paving, it wouldn't matter if we fixed it. It wouldn't matter.
You're responsible.
Right. It would be the responsible.
Like I said, we could cap it the way it is, and it would look, the setting would be fine, but the odds of it pulling up were.
Well, there's probably no doubt in my mind, if y'all fix it, you're property, but there's always a chance. There's always a chance.
That's right. Like I said, we're spending currently on Ward Avenue alone, the actual cost of paving. Ward Avenue, the price of the cost right now is seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. But we're three quarters, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in payment.
I think from piece of mind, it would be, I want to make it.
I think this is important.
We're the market. We'll come up with this issue again as we continue paving throughout the years.
Very possible. Like I said, the area that's really concerned is twelve feet, so if you come off of Mulberry and turn right on Ward, it's twelve feet from the right of the gutter, so the whole right side, twelve feet down the road is where most are concerned. So you can drive right now and you can see it. Like, you're down the base zone. And then down farther, you can actually see where it settled out. There were some real base issues there. You know, like I said, as you mentioned, we had sink holes in the past, and the garbage truck actually dropped it one of them.
We don't have to have any. I tell you, the crew's done a really good job with the paving. I think it's, you know, looks good. I want to thank the council and Ellis and Andrew Ross for screwing the paving and moving forward with it. It's exciting to see the streets are getting paved, so.
It's went well, very well.
I think the council put priority on paving moving forward, and everything's going to port. And they're in the hottest part of the day. They're out there. They're doing a really good job.
And worst-case scenario, we have to cut this bunch out of the next.
Sure.
Yours, budget for paving.
Hey, so that's something we need to put on the agenda for Monday night?
Yes, this will come back to the council in the form of a contract amendment to your existing contract, Derek.
Okay. Any other questions for Ellis? Thanks, Ellis. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next item on the Personnel Rules and Regulations Amendment. This has been suggested by Councilmember Dixon.
They're going to take a five-man resource for a deal.
We're tired of the council, Dixon.
This is something that I've been working on for months, and it has to do with the employees being able to bid and be awarded jobs within the city or utilities. And it is, they have to submit a job bid or a preference to the human resource manager. And then, once they are selected, they would be selected on seniority. But there's also, the word qualifiable means that they would have satisfied factors, as experience, work performance, ability to work with others, good attendance, and employment safety record. The employees, once a job bid went on the board for the utility, it would go throughout the utility department. And once it's withdrawn from there, the city employees would have the opportunity to bid on the jobs. Once it went from there, and nobody bid on the jobs, it would go out to the public. Be vice versa for the city employee job opening. Once it left from there, go to utilities. Once it left from there, no bids were awarded, they go to the public. There's other qualifying, rather means, that goes along with this first step file. Work performance, salary, the employees, or, pardon my hands, would not be a part of the job bidding scenario. Those jobs will be awarded by the city manager and the utility manager. Do you have any questions about it?
My concern with, my only concern is that the job bid or the preference sheet, and here's my concern with it. Barry, I'm going to use you as an example, okay? So, I mean, Barry, you're the hottest, right? You're chief. I mean, how's he going to feel if everybody puts in for his job on their preference list?
For Barry's job?
Yeah.
That is a salary position. It will be awarded by the city manager.
So that doesn't go on the preference list.
That job will not be bidded out to the employees.
That's one question I have about that. Why would we leave work performance in everyone that are in the salary?
Well, that's why.
Probably leave work performance in that group.
That's why for the past month, I've let that.
Oh, I've read over it, and I've got, I've marked mine up, and got, that's one question I have, is why would you leave that group that's hourly?
The work performance?
Yeah.
That's something I mentioned on, and we talked about that issue, about if you're taking out the work performance as being able to bid, which that is basically, really should be a salary position.
Yeah, but it's not.
But it's not. It's an hourly position. And if this council and the utility board wants to have that job submitted as a job bidding procedure, then we can add that. But if not, then we'll leave it just like this one.
Well, our current procedure that we just passed a couple of months ago, policy procedure manual. I'm comfortable with the way it's laid out. People still have a chance to put in for any job. They know it's, they know the job's open. They can post, they can give a resume to our human resource director.
So you're going to leave work performance still on the list of job bidding?